ISD Foundation Annual Report.
We have great partners in Tyler ISD and our surrounding communities that support the educational mission of our school system of successful school outcomes. And the foundation is here to provide their annual report that shows all the great things that they're doing in support of our teachers and our students. Ms. Farr?
Thank you. This is perfect. All right, so we'll get into it. So the mission of the Tyler ISD Foundation, we are the philanthropic partner of Tyler ISD, providing resources that inspire learning, enrich teaching, and enhance opportunities for our students through exemplary programs. Simply put, we seek funds throughout our community and we grant those funds in impactful ways. Some of those ways that we grant out those funds are through district events and programs, scholarship night, Night of Shining Stars, professional development grants, emergency grants, and what most of you guys are probably familiar with is Grants for Great Ideas during Grant Patrol. This year to date, which is up until June 1st, our fiscal year will end August 31st, we have raised a total revenue of $449,689. So, very excited about that. That's one of our highest grossing years at this point to date. We have increased our corporate sponsor giving by 25.8%. That is now our largest pool, which was a goal of our board and myself. We've also increased our individual donor giving by 114.39%, which was also a huge goal. And so as you kind of look here at this slice of pie, you'll notice that the other parts, while they contribute largely to what we are able to do, but we've always wanted to make sure that, one, we were not dependent or relying on our employee giving campaign, nor our endowment funds to kind of feed the activities that we do each year. And then we just manage scholarships and those investments, and then grant writing that I do. So, so far, so good. Gifts to Tyler ISD this past school year, we have gifted a little over $211,000, which is a 30.26% increase in support over last year. So far, this is tracking to be our largest year of giving to the district. And those funds break down, as such, shown here, $7,000 in professional development and emergency grants, district programs and events, $17,841 scholarships. We awarded $64,500 this year. Teacher appreciation and support, so far, that's $6,665. That will round out to be a little closer to $20,000. Grants for Great Ideas, a little more than $115,000 has went out this year. Any questions on any of those? Good deal. And what that kind of breaks down to a little bit more, that Grants for Great Ideas was 35 grants across 16 campuses plus the transportation department, and we actually gave out $100,000. That additional $15,000 plus came in as we reached out to community partners to help fund, finish funding grants. And so writing grants or partnering with a campus to get the remaining funds for their campus beyond what we funded through Grants for Great Ideas. So that's what you see there. Special grants and emergency grant at Boashears, a special campus grant at Hubbard as well. Welcomed more than 150 newly hired teachers during our annual new teach... and that will come up in July. As I said, the 29 student scholarships makes up that $64,000. The $500 was a separate scholarship that came in from an outside partner that's not established as a scholarship. But they are a partner of ours, so we're able to take that in and grant it back out to the student and families. Celebrated 42 graduating seniors and 35 distinguished educators through Night of Shining Stars. And this year, through a collaborative partnership with the district health services, as well as our counseling and guiding program, we were able to establish the Tyler ISD Foundation Care Closets across six campuses. We'll be including a seventh campus at Early College this year. Thus far, just during April 1st to May 23rd, we provided 278 weekend meal kits and assisted 124 students with clothing and hygiene products through that initiative. Are there any questions on any of that? This is our financial look over the past five years that we have had here. As you can see, we continue to have an increase throughout the years from...this actually is an official snapshot of the time from when I started on the foundation board, or on the foundation as the executive director, to now. And so we've continued to see an increase, continue to go up. From the beginning to now, we've had a 30.26% increase in our assets and growth. So, very proud of that. And so far, our overall impact, we've officially passed that threshold, as I told you guys the last time I was here, that I was hoping we would do, since our creation in 1990. So, super excited this year, we'll be celebrating 35 years of supporting and partnering with Tyler ISD. We have now gifted over $4 million to Tyler ISD. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I'll make a couple of quick comments. First, appreciate all the work that you guys do. Suzette, if you want to quickly recognize the guys that are here?
Yes, we have our board president, Courtney Burlison, our VP of Programs, Shannon Franzen, and our VP of Development, Chris Hazel.
And I see Alva back there, too.
Oh. And, sorry, and our VP of Marketing and Events, Elva Estrada.
Yeah, thanks for coming, guys. The other thing I wanted to do just quickly is, I wanted to inform my colleagues that the foundation board receives reporting on a lot of giving. And a couple of those groups that the reports are, show, is the foundation board giving, administration's giving, and this board's giving to the foundation. And usually, we are outpaced by the other two groups, so I want to encourage my colleagues to check out the foundation and do what you can, if you can.
Thank you, Aaron. Anybody else?
Suzette, I just, you have done such a great job with this, the foundation and everything you do and all the activities, and you've increased it so much. I love it. I remember Junior League of Tyler, I guess when I was president, we started Care Closet.
Yes.
And we were in one school.
Yeah.
And we had one little closet.
Yeah.
And that's grown so much. And so, it's awesome. And I love what you guys are doing with that to help. So just keep up the good work. Just awesome job.
Thank you.
Yes, we appreciate everything that you do, and I know the teachers love it. I was, when I taught, I was recipient of the foundation grant, and so it's an awesome exit to your classroom. And we will try to give more, won't we, to help with this situation? And so, we're just putting it out there in the public.
Thank you.
So you guys will know that we appreciate all that you do for Tyler ISD. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my annual statement of, I remember when, nearly a dozen years ago now, that it was going to be my recommendation to this board to dissolve the foundation because it was circling the drain. And it took some former board members, some of y'all were, may have been around the board, maybe not yet, that rallied and did some of the administrative tasks on their own. Debbie Matucci, Tab Bell, some of those folks that really did do more than they should have done as a governing board.
Yes.
That never happens up here, but it, they had to do it there to salvage the great thing that the doctor, this room, the guy that this room is named after started on behalf of Tyler ISD, Dr. Jack Davidson. So, congratulations to where y'all are now. Continue to make those improvements and provide what's best for our kids. But thank y'all for what you do. And it's been, it's been a journey, and y'all are in such good shape right now. So congratulations on that, and continue the great work.
Thank you, DMC.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Budget proposal for 2025-26 school year.
Already?
Already.
Well, here we are, just a day fresh of it actually becoming state law. And we have with us today our CFO, Casey Russell. It's good to have Ms. Russell back. She will provide some commentary as needed. I'll roll through this, actually, if that's okay, Casey, since you're just like only back on the job for like two days or something like that. We also have in the back of the room quietly, our comp controller, who has been serving as interim business manager in the development of our budget as we're going here. So we're going to go ahead and get into that. We'll go with slide one. Property values, we always provide you an update on that. There's been a 10.3% increase initially. And then by the time the final values get played out, you're going to look at a 1 or 2.2% decrease on final values. After they go back in and tweak some of the things, including some of the appeals of those evaluations, I don't know about y'all, but my property value went up this time, and that is part of the...quit shaking your head, Dr. Ward. That is part of the game that we call school finance. And y'all are about to head off to some board training or have some opportunity to board training. If y'all want to have deep dives into that, please find us, find a training to attend so that you can become more familiar with the school finance dance that we are going through right now. There is a proposal to increase homestead exemption from 100K to $140,000. That means the first $140,000 on your, on your property actually gets exempt from tax, taxation. There's a whole big game of that as well. Go on, next slide. Our projected increases, again, this all comes from the Texas Association of School Business Officials, and we'll continue to work with them throughout the next couple of months in trying to firm up some of our information and data so that we can get an accurate reflection of what House Bill 2 actually means for us that was just signed into law. But the projected increase of 7.7 million combined for property taxes and state funding to Tyler ISD. The increase includes, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in our legislative update, $2,500 for teachers with three to four years' experience, and for those with five or more years' experience, $5,000 increase. Increase also includes the new allotment for basic costs, the ABC, which is the basic allotment to fund raises for other staff and for, for, for basic fixed costs such as utilities, transportation, insurance. We'll talk about the negotiations that resulted in that here in a minute. Increase in school safety allotment of about $635,000 to Tyler ISD. That's an incredible increase there. Now, who's here today for safety and security? Are they even in the building or in the room? Yeah, Mills, this doesn't mean you get 635 million, or, excuse me, thousand added to your budget, sir. So make sure that you talk to Chief Walsworth about that as well. We have been all in in Tyler ISD for, since 2019. And we have done a lot on our, on our M&amp;O side to fund that, right, comp controller? And, and so that 635 is just going to help us maybe carve out some, some, some room inside of what we're already spending, but also keep up to date on some compensation increases. If you think about the 40 or so individuals that we have in our safety and security and Tyler ISD Police Department, guess what also pays for them to maybe cover games and cover, and cover events, and to make sure that we have our safety and security, not just during our school day, but after school hours as well, at 635. So, it's not like we're going to go out and buy a bunch of widgets and gadgets to, for safety and security on this. I want to be very clear about that with Mills in the room. Next slide. Here's our cost for teacher raises under proposed expenditures. That 7.7 is going to go, about five and a half million of it's going to go to mandated teacher raises, okay? The allotment from the state's 4.5 million. It includes an increase in the base salary and a raise for teachers with one to two years, we already talked about that, that are not state funded. So some of the, the rules and interpretations of, of law are going to actually, yes, you're going to have to dig into some of your, your, your other revenue streams for, for raises as well. Other employees, the proposed expenditure is going to be a 5% raise of midpoint, for clerical and the manual trades, that'll cost us about a million dollars. And a 3% raise of midpoint for professionals, about three quarters of a million. Total cost for raises in Tyler ISD is going to be about 7.25 million, which consumes pretty much all of the increase. Here's some other factors. High watermark of enrollment. I know there's been a lot of rhetoric around, we're losing enrollment, but we're not. We actually had the high watermark of enrollment for the first time ever in the history of Tyler ISD. We had 18,750 students. Pretty incredible. And that was a surprise to us. We didn't really anticipate that. We don't really have any way of knowing that that's happening. We're not a fast-growth district. But we, 80% of that enrollment growth actually came from public school systems in Texas located outside of Smith County. So we did get some private school kids back. We got some charter school kids back, maybe a homeschool kid or two. But this indicates that people are moving to Smith County and to Tyler, and that they chose public education as their, as their vehicle. And Tyler ISD was the lucky one this year. So I don't know if it's going to work the same way this coming year, before we can start calling it a trend, we probably need about five years of that 750 kid growth that we saw last year before we start saying that we can really count on that as a budgetary, as a revenue, in my opinion. Another factor, this is going to go down, our SARS program, we're getting out of SARS because of the, for one, the feds came back and, I don't want to call it sued the state, but they wrote the state a bill about SARS and MAC. This is when you provide healthcare services to, to severe and profound students. So if you've got a kid maybe with a catheter in, you actually go and do that, your staff goes in and changes that catheter, and we're actually reimbursed from the feds and the state. Well, they've changed a lot of the rulemaking on that, and have actually going to cut back a lot of the funding that, that we used to be eligible for. And we're still going to have to do that, just because we're not, we're going to opt out of it. But the time and effort that it takes for our campuses and our staff to do this is, along with the decrease in the funding and how, and what they're going to fund us to doing, is, is going to be a wash for us as far as participation goes. This last bullet, we've been very proud of. I probably had a pretty ambitious goal at the start of this. I think upwards of, the sky's falling, five to 10 million dollars are trying to lean up around our school district, and we've still got some places we can lean up on. But our efficiency is resulting upwards of $2 million as well. This is going to leave room for us to absorb some basic cross increases and prepare for for next year's budget. Because this biennium, every time the legislature meets and, and every time we do a budget, it's not just for this coming year, we also have to prepare for what happens the following year, along with the following five years and the following decade, because some of the, the law actually has some of the, I think this allotment for basic costs expiring after the second year of the biennium. In other words, this is not a thing that's going to be built into, baked into law every time. They're going to have to discuss this again in the 90th legislature, and we just wrap this one up. I can't wait. So there's that. Next, there's your budget presentation.
Any comments or questions?
Just one. So on, since we're flat next year, that, that's going to be pretty tough for us to give raises two years in a row, I would, I would assume, or would, what does that look like? And what, what do we typically do? Are we typically doing raises every other year? I've been here two years, and I can't even remember if we did raises last year. I know we did my first year, but...
Every year. And they, and they come in, and they come in different shapes and sizes, obviously. It could be through the, a conservative approach of a stoppant, which you're not married to every year, or actually something that's actually baked in. And so we have been consistent over the last, I think, belief, I believe this will be the 13th year consecutive that we have provided some type of compensation boost to the most, most classification of employees. I think 13 years ago, you didn't do anything on the administrative end. But I do believe this 12th budget that I will be responsible for, all will receive some type of boost. For next year, or for the year after, that's why we're kind of going through some of this efficiency project that we're going through so that we can carve out some money, so that we can still be competitive in some way, shape, or form.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Harford, I want to say that, and I know leaning up our district is not an easy thing to do, and I know that, we've talked about this for a while, not knowing what the legislature was going to do, so I just appreciate the time and effort y'all took to really do that and to think about our teachers, who we didn't know what we were, how we were going to give them a raise, but we know we wanted to. So, thank y'all for everybody that was a part of that to make that 2 million, you know, happen for them.
Thank you. You know, we've got approximately, let's just, a nice round number, 1,250 teachers. So if you're going to give all of them, y'all are smart, if you're going to give all of them a $1,000 raise, we're going to deal with whole numbers here, it cost the district 1.25 million dollars to be able to do so. So, we, we were going to be able to do that, and we were always going to start out with our classroom teachers. And thankfully, the state did the right thing and came through and tried to make up for some lost time. So this cushion was there just in case, but just so that the public knows and that y'all know, what that usually costs for us, about just 1,250 times a thousand is about 1.25 million. And so just think, when you think of those numbers, about what it's going to take to do things down the road, you know, right sizing our school system is, is important. And we've done a lot of that without duress and with some duress over the last dozen years or so. Remember, we used to have a six middle school feeder pattern, and we're down to a four plus. I call the plus being Birdwell and Caldwell, but we're down to four. And a lot of those things have been done for academic reasons, which we'll get into that in the, in the summer, about some of the success we have, especially at Moore, which absorbed 90% of the Dogan feeder pattern, which had been, had a chronic low performance over 30 years, 40 years. Going to be a B over there again. So, it can be done, academic success can be done, at the same time, you're trying to right, right size your school system. So, I appreciate you recognizing that, and we'll continue to try to do that as well over the next couple of years.
I'd like to just tell that, I think that we made some difficult changes. I don't know if everybody agreed with all the changes, but I think it's going to be very effective. I think that we put some people in places that will be very beneficial for the district. I think we have some good things coming forth, going forth. It's always difficult when, when you have to make those decisions in downsizing or rearranging. I think the board has been pretty pleased with the direction that we're going in regards to what we want to accomplish with the district. So I compliment you on that. I know it's a difficult task, but I think it, it was a job well done.
Thank you. As we embark on Lone Star Governance this coming Monday and Tuesday, congratulations, y'all. You know, it is about outcomes, and that's, you're going to hear that drilled into you over and over and over. Some of us have been through this before, right, Gina? Rojo? Mr. Martinez? Mr. Bergfeld? And that is the priority, and taking care of teachers was the priority in this project. But this board of managers, the governance team, has so much more to deal with in regard to the management of the school district, that while our outcomes are a priority, y'all have got to take care of the taxpayers' dollars and their facilities. And y'all are doing a good job at that, too. So back at, at y'all for saying the good things administratively and about our, about our staff, including our teachers, but back at this board for being courageous enough to do the right thing whenever it needs to be done.
All right. We thank you for those wonderful comments, and I know the teachers appreciate it as well as everyone else. Next to continuous improvement, student outcomes, gifted and talented update.
Speaking of, Raina Patton and Dr. Cassandra Chapa are going to come up here and provide a, as part of your board monitoring calendar, a presentation. It's also state law as well. So it's not only that. We care enough about it to do this appropriately and to have a presentation here, so we're going to let them give you your annual gifted and talented update.
Hello, President Atkins, Dr. Crawford, Board of Trustees. I'm fortunate enough to have an opportunity to be able to start my journey as I support gifted and talented, but I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Raina Patton, who looks over our gifted and talented and has been working tirelessly this year to make some improvements. So I'm excited for her to get to share that with y'all.
Good morning, board. Dr. Crawford, this presentation will serve as your annual update as required by the state plan for gifted and talented. The state defines a gifted and talented student as a child or youth who performs at or shows a potential for performing at a remarkably high level of accomplishment when compared to others at the same age group, experience, or environment, and who exhibits high performance capability in an intellectual, creative, artistic, possesses an unusual capacity for leadership, or excels in a specific academic field. This state definition of gifted is the center around all the work that we do for the gifted learner throughout the respected domains. Here are the six domains that we continuously evaluate throughout the year. The state plan is formatted to accomplishable standards for accountability while recognizing exemplary actions. We've defined success by meeting accountability and/or exemplary standards defined by the state plan. As I go through each domain, I'll highlight our strengths and the areas of focus. The first domain update is fidelity of services. We define fidelity as the intent by which our GT program is implemented as intended. Our develop, our department consistently meets to collaborate and assess the effectiveness of the needs of students and campuses for GT services with feedback from campus, staff, and families. We've continued focus on equitable instructional delivery, differentiation for student growth and success, student engagement, as well as artifacts of learning and student products exhibited during GT Awareness Week and the end-of-year expo showcase. Our GT teachers are assigned to multiple campuses across the district, ensuring equitable instruction for both high and low-need campuses. The state plan states exemplary standards are recognized in student identification by providing assessment opportunities that are made available at least once a year at the elementary level. I truly believe this is one of our great strengths with our program. As we previously had a short referral window that was offered in the fall, testing occurred once a year in either January or February, and then students then had to wait to the following year to receive any services. This has since changed. We now have a referral window that begins September 1st, ends March 31st, and we have at least four, not only assessment dates, but also placements. So our students are able to be placed immediately into services and do not have to wait to the following year. To promote equity, identification efforts expanded this year. In addition to staff and parent referrals in first, kindergarten first, third through fifth, all second grade students were given the opportunity to complete the COGAP prescreener, followed by full testing for potential GT candidates. This approach provides the district with, and campus norming data aligned to the state's gifted definition. We also, I presented last year about a pilot program, kindergarten planned learning experiences. This now finished its second year, focused on early identification at under-identified and high-need campuses. The program expanded from six to eight campuses. We also extended this to provide first-grade planned learning experiences at three sites this year. We saw notable growth in GT identification at Bell, Clarkson, and Orr. Following the success, planned learning experiences will now be implemented at all campuses with 5% or below GT identification, aiming to create equitable learning experience and readiness for GT screening. Some campuses still show low representation. We are collaborating with principals to implement planned learning experiences, provide staff development on identification. Personalized training will be offered to help increase purposeful referrals that align to each campus's needs. This is a representation of elementary GT population by... This is a representation of elementary GT population by. We're excited to share that our identification of African-American students in the gifted and talented program has increased by nearly 2% compared to last year, an encouraging shift after several years of stagnation. This progress means more African-American students are now receiving the GT services they deserve. While the increase is modest, it represents an important step forward in our efforts towards greater equity. Through the implementation of campus-level planned learning experiences, targeted professional development for staff on GT identification, and in-class observations by GT teachers, we are actively creating pathways to ensure all students have access to opportunities that reflect their potential. We're optimistic about continuing this momentum and moving closer to a truly representative GT population across the district. Tyler ISD meets exemplary standards in regard to service design. Services for gifted and talented students are comprehensive, structured, sequenced, and appropriately challenging, including options in four foundational curricular areas, as well as arts, leadership, creativity, and career and technology, education. We will continue to serve students that may only be identified as gifted in one area in our new Core Plus service model, something that was not previously implemented until last year. These students who would have not been previously identified can now receive GT services that continue to meet their academic needs, providing weekly GT services in a shorter service time. With an increase in our emergent bilinguals and dual-language learners, two years ago, we were able to hire our first bilingual GT teacher. She delivers content in both English and Spanish, and students are able to respond and create in their primary language. We are working on recruitment to provide exceptional bilingual and language support to all of our emergent bilinguals and support students with their academic language in English. We currently provide professional learning for GT teachers and ESL and language acquisition. GT teachers engage in regularly scheduled PLCs to collaborate, monitor, and adjust curriculum and rigor based on student needs. Each classroom across the district has access to and provided with the same activities and TEAC-based content. Our staff conducts continuous progress monitoring and meets on each student at least twice a year to determine the appropriate services, placement, and supports. In addition to weekly GT class components of brain building, critical thinking, and STEM opportunities, students complete a major project from the Texas Performance Standards Project. These projects are better known as TPSPs and are available K through 12, and comprised of a set of performance standards, curricula, and assessments for differentiation instruction to deepen academic learning. TPSP is now recognized as the primary tool for assessing effectiveness of gifted and talented as of September 24, and it is also the first in the nation to have, we are the first in the nation to have this type of assessment tool to guide GT services. We will continue to monitor and adjust grade level TEACs aligned with exemplar artifacts of learning as students engage in research projects, design, and presentations, culminating in a campus showcase. We will also continue GT staff collaboration to ensure consistent and equitable project lessons and curriculum are provided in a rigorous manner. Domain of professional development, Tyler ISD teachers who provide instruction and services that are a part of the district's defined GT services receive a minimum of six hours of annual professional learning. These teachers include Gen Ed, core subject area teachers, SPED, and master teachers. We continue to increase training compliance rates by providing multiple formats of professional learning opportunities to satisfy state-required training. Overall, GT required training has seen a significant compliance rate improvement over the past two years. In May of 2023, we had a compliance rate of 43%. Last year, I was able to inform you, we had an increase to a 70% compliance rate, and as of the end of May, we had a 79% compliance rate. District compliance for teachers obtaining their annual six-hour update and/or 30-hour foundations training is monitored by campus principals, as well as myself. Our department also provides resources for administrators and counselors to receive their training as well as required by the state of Texas. Our intent is to increase compliance for all teachers in need of 30-hour foundations. We have focused this goal by contracting with Region 10 to provide both in-person and Community and family involvement. GT teachers continue to work with campus administration to showcase student products during campus events for family and community engagement. This includes academic and cultural events at the campus level. This also can count towards Title I events. In the spring, during the GT Awareness Week, GT students highlighted various GT activities conducted at the campus level, and GT expos were held the first week of May and highlighted student Texas Performance Standard projects, or otherwise known as TPSPs. This year, we began a quarterly district-wide family newsletter to connect GT families with classroom learning as well as GT resources. On September 16th, we will host a district-wide information event at the CTC to assist parents in the referral screening process, as well as April 7th, we will hold a district GT Family Night focused on literacy and STEM. Some program highlights. Do you need to make a correction? The 30% of kindergarten students who participated in and were referred for testing qualified for GT services. This was a meaningful collaboration between GT teachers and classroom teachers where PLEs were conducted. Universal screening occurred throughout the district for all second grade, providing valuable information for teachers and families. We enhanced instructional quality and academic rigor across the district by restructuring teacher assignments to provide targeted support to both high need and low need campuses. We strengthened family and community partnerships by providing increased communication and And this is some of our smiley faces from our GT Expo. They love to, you know, they've worked really hard, and they're very proud of the projects that they have created, and here highlights a few of the expos that were conducted. This concludes the annual update and board presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments, questions?
I'm very pleased to see the number of African-Americans increased by 2%. I still think that, well, I know it should be better, and I'm hoping that maybe somehow we, they're in the crack somewhere, we're not finding them, but I really appreciate the effort that you've done to improve that amount. I think that sometime our kids don't perform at the level we expect them to, or they're capable of doing, simply because they haven't been encouraged. So I think the gifted and talented testing helps in that aspect to identify some of those kids that don't have that encouragement from home, unfortunately. But I do appreciate the effort that you've done in increasing the number that's going into the programs.
Thank you, and we'll continue to work hard to identify our students.
Real quick, Board, we've come a long way from the old Gary model, which was cool, but remember how we used to send kids to Gary for half a day? And then the kids that stayed on the comprehensive campus reviewed the stuff from the four previous days of instruction? I don't think there was a lot of equity in that either, just to stop what we were doing on comprehensive campuses, just so the kids could go to Gary, and we didn't want them to miss out. So we're more agile doing this at the campus level, and there's a lot of great things pre-K through 12 that are occurring because our community is backed to some of these facility initiatives. If you think about early college, you think about the Career Tech Center, and then all the great things in the design of our high schools to be able to serve GT kids, just think about, we didn't have early college, and we didn't have the modern facilities at Legacy and Tyler High to be able to provide cool experiences for GT kids. So by the time they got through with the Gary experience, what were we really doing at the?
Absolutely nothing.
Absolutely nothing, it felt like. So in saying that, we've come a long way, and certainly appreciate the backing of this board, and Raina, you've done a great job. You're very passionate and meticulous about this, we appreciate that. Ms. Patton?
All right. My child was a Gary.
There you go. It's a cool program.
So they liked writing on bus.
Yes.
So thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate it. Okay, next we have CLI, M-Class, and I ready. You ready?
Yes. So we get to just roll on into this next part, and I'm really excited about what we're going to look at today as we present to you our end-of-year diagnostic data. So we're going to start off with CLI, and I know it wasn't too long ago that Ms. Dykman was up here sharing that middle-of-year, but now we're back at it, and we're ready to talk about how our pre-K and Head Start students did. Again, for those watching and those that are unfamiliar, this is administered three times a year to our pre-K and Head Start students. At the beginning of the year, we may have some individuals that were three, who are ending the year at four, and it assesses a variety of skills, including reading and math, and social and emotional measures. This is measured one-on-one with a teacher, with some elements being via a computer screen or an iPad tablet, in which a teacher is showing them some pictures, and then also some subjective rubric that is filled out by the teacher. So here, we will see the end-of-year results from beginning to end-of-year of students who were performing at benchmark. So the reading components include rapid letter naming, rapid vocabulary, phonological awareness, and early writing, and then we have a math component and the social-emotional component. So as we can see, we see some great gains. These are very comparable to what we might see in the past. One thing I do want to note about this slide that I think is very relevant is the particular cohort that we started with is one of the lowest cohorts we have seen in the past four years. So when we see a difference of maybe 16%, this is not necessarily incremental growth. This is developmental growth, and so seeing 60% in early writing is quite a success for some of these students. Again, the, what you're seeing here, we see rapid vocabulary at plus 6%. Again, this is done on a benchmark, so it's not necessarily linear growth, but it's whether or not they are hitting that benchmark. We have actually set the benchmark higher, which we've discussed earlier this school year, to really prepare for our kindergarten readiness that aligns with M-Class, which is higher than what the CLI normative data might show. These tests are also done in English and Spanish, so it does include our Hispanic students. Here, you will see the data broken down by the type of programs we offer with tuition, non-tuition, and Head Start. Again, we see some extreme growth. There may be areas of stagnation, but again, this is not true growth, so I repeat that, especially with that rapid vocabulary in pre-K tuition. You know, that's not saying that students are not growing. What it's saying is that they met benchmark for those appropriate time periods. Where we see the social and emotional, this is actually our strongest performance at end-of-year that we have seen in the past four years. Typically, what we saw last year was a 10% decline in these rubrics, but here, we are seeing more of a stagnation, which is great. Also, it's meaning that our teachers are understanding the rubric better on how they can clearly understand students' social and emotional development. And then we also see these great increases in early writing, which we have not seen in the past, and I want to attribute that to the work that our assessments department and Ms. Holland and Ms. Patton have done to create a stronger early rubric for our teachers, so that it really gives them appropriate benchmarks to be monitoring throughout the year. So when they fill out this rubric at the end of the year, it's a little bit truer to what our students are developing. And then we have our data by demographics, so we have our African-American, Hispanic, and white. Again, I do want to put in for the Hispanic students, that does include any that are Spanish-speaking and possibly non-Spanish-speaking, but are in one of our programs. And so again, noting some of the wonderful strengths that we see in phonological awareness and what we're seeing in rapid letter naming, that too is also by design. We were very intentional in embedding our phonics curriculum with our pre-K and Head Start classrooms, and I'll attribute that to the work of our reading department. I know we have our coordinator, Ms. Gillespie in the back, and her team, but they were really working on supporting teachers and making sure we were embedding purposeful time with curriculum that aligns with what they'll see in kindergarten. It was a struggle for our teachers this year to get used to implementing a rigorous phonics curriculum, so I know that it took a moment for us to get with that. We also implemented some progress monitoring with more intentionality based off their CLI waves. Again, that level of data reading and data analysis was new for some of our teachers, but I think as we're moving forward, we're going to be prepared for year two, and really helping us build that growth. I do, before going on to M-Class, I do want to come back to this slide again to denote the strengths of early writing that we're seeing across our program, the amount of rapid letter naming and phonological awareness, considering where we started with this cohort. And then I do want to denote, like, rapid vocabulary. With the amount of intentionality that we put on writing and that phonological awareness, it is likely that our rapid vocabulary did hit a stagnation. So again, this isn't saying that students aren't growing in rapid vocabulary, but it is a quite difficult test. So students are shown a picture, and it could be the vocabulary word that they're looking for is penguin, and the student says bird. And so unfortunately, like, that's a zero. It could also be where they see a purse, and someone might say tote. So although it is rigorous vocabulary, they might not be scored for that particular word. So although we may not be excited about all the growth in all the areas, just remember, it's nonlinear, it's developmental, and lastly, we had these students, if we were lucky, for 187 days. So with that benchmark being kind of lower than it has been in previous years, this is some really tremendous growth for where we're going in the future. And if attendance, we always say attendance is important, but if we're truly going to make some gains before we get them in kindergarten, attendance is really important moving forward for our families to recognize the power that we can bring them with this opportunity. I also know that y'all got some data in a really big Google sheet, had a lot of numbers on it, and it also had a lot of dashes on it. So I had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Leverett yesterday and just clarify that those dashes represent that we had less than five students in that category. So where you might see numbers in one area, depending on the program that they participate in, if there were less than five, you might see a dash there. So we'll move on to M-Class, and M-Class is our language development diagnostic for kindergarten through second grade. Similarly, it's done one-on-one with a teacher, and really, we're looking for two different things. How are students reaching benchmark on their reading skills according to M-Class? And then how are students performing in those different reading skills in order for them to be on grade level by third grade? So here, we see our cohort growth for kindergarten first and second from beginning of year to end of year, and that, these percentages are really a great indicator of how well we've been progress monitored. we've been progress monitoring from the beginning of the year data. Our teachers are provided reminders, because we know we get busy, but they are really focused on getting to those students who are well below and below grade level and making sure that they are getting progress monitored about every 10 to 15 days. And so we have seen tremendous improvements with our students who are needing that accelerated In this slide, you'll see the students who are at or above the benchmark from beginning of year to end of year by demographic. And again, these are stellar numbers, very comparable to what we've seen in the past with lots of improvements in our Hispanic and our Ecodis. In our African-American, this is one of our stronger that we see in kindergarten, so this is a great baseline for them as they move forward. And then lastly, we have this broken down by skills. Where you see some dashes here, the test is not great appropriate for kindergarten and/or students should be passed. Those areas are tested out in those areas in second grade. But again, lots of green, lots of exciting things. I will say, one of the strongest indicators for our kindergarten is the growth that we saw in decoding and word reading as we get into first grade. And now we're moving into iReady. So iReady, again, diagnostic three times a year. This is done via the computer. It's assessed in a group setting, but it also aligns to a personal learning plan for students that they can also be working on throughout the school year. Our teachers also utilize this program for toolkit and supplemental instruction as it is kind of what we use to project proficiency on STAR. And so here you will see our cohort growth data. So the numbers here represent the percentage of students that made at least one full year worth of progress according to the diagnostic. So we're saying that 66% of students in kindergarten demonstrated a year's worth of growth in their skills from beginning of year to end of year in reading. So these are very indicative of the work that we're learning about iReady, how to motivate students, and even getting up into sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, although we see that stagnation, we also know the increased rigor that students are seeing at that time, and we also know that motivation is a struggle for our middle school students. But this is some of our strongest performance in math that we've seen in the past couple of years. Here we see our growth by demographic, and so this is those that made at least a full year worth of progress through the program for reading and math by demographic. So just like I said with that kindergarten student, they met their year's progress. It also is not indicating those that were just right there below the mark that iReady sets for each student, and it doesn't designate the number of students that got two years or more worth of growth, which is impressive. So we have a lot of great things happening. One personal celebration I do want to throw out for a campus that I supported a lot of is OR. So although it may not be shown here on this growth, the number of students that we've gone from one to two grade levels below into that approaches phase at benchmark, although it may not be represented as a year's worth of growth, they saw extreme improvement in their kender and second graders of almost 120 students no longer being in that tier three and into that green and red. So although not every one of those students is, like, maybe represented in this percentage, we are definitely moving the bar and making sure that we're ending the year with students who are less behind than when they started the year. In this slide, it's our comparison data to our state and comparison districts that also use iReady. The percentages here could represent, depending on the subject level, well, this is for reading, but depending on the grade level, it could range anywhere from a comparison of 9,000 students to almost 80,000 students. So it's a wide range, but demonstrating these percentages of differences with our state and comparison districts, we're really hoping it's also going to be indicative of what you see towards the end of the month with STAR. So this is very promising for us. Our campuses ended on a really great note. I will say, one thing that we are now better prepared to do is using this data to start the year off attacking those small groups right away. So as we've progressed into progress monitoring throughout the year, I think we're now getting to a place where our principals can read this data, really design master schedules that we're not waiting six weeks until after school starts. After we get that beginning-of-year data, we're really starting the year running. So this is really promising for us.
Hey, wouldn't it be cool if the state did a through-year testing model like this? Okay, there you go.
I promise that wasn't planned. So these are some newer graphs that we haven't shown in the past, but I think to Dr. Crawford's point, if we were using the data that we've got, what does that look like on our progress measures as we use in our CIPs and the goal line for our district? And knowing where we were in 21, 22 with a completely different STAR test, where we were in 22, 23, really relying on Renaissance and MAP data, what you see here for our kindergarten students' projection, our first-grade student projection, and our second-grade student projection is really stellar. We're really learning. I think, I explain it to my family members and my friends that are not in Tyler, like, we don't play school here. We're really trying to make sure that our students are getting the skills that they need to support our community and to have opportunities for themselves. And then lastly, just as we did through the reading, we have our math comparison. Like, this, math has been a difficult part for us in the past, and we are really up in our game. She may not be in here, but Michelle Gandy, our math coordinator and her team, they are really working to make sure that our curriculum is set up to where teachers are not getting to choose what they're teaching, but they're meeting the expectation of the skill, and they're utilizing tools like iReady in order to support our students. So I know even with our middle schools, it's not exactly where we'd like it to be, but seeing some positive numbers in that seventh-grade math, that's promising. And even more so, these progress measure charts are showing some great trajectory for our kender in first grade. I think in second grade, we're seeing where we need to maybe address some gaps that they didn't get in their kindergarten and first-grade experience, but this is a really great starting off place for them as they go into third grade to attack that first STAR. So that is my update. Do we have any questions?
Yes, so on, sorry, on the projected scores you had, we don't have how those will play out just yet, right? I mean, this is what the program is projecting our passing rate, because I know last year we had some issues in, maybe it was math, I can't remember, where they came back in and reworked it. So just kind of curious, do you think these scores are on par with how we'll actually, excuse me, how our students will actually perform this year?
Yes, I would say that these are taken from our performance on the diagnostic, but these will be a pretty clear representation of what we expect. Also note that these are kender first and second. You know, they're looking towards the future, but I would say that what we see in our state in comparison is going to be a pretty clear picture of what to expect in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
We've spent a lot of time talking about assessment over the last five months and trying to get House Bill Four across the line, and I'm not going to be a skeptic or a pessimist about the direction of your questioning, but being able to give you an answer of, has iReady gotten their stuff fixed to where we can prognosticate better, is what you're really asking.
Is it worth the money we're spending?
Well, worth the money we're spending. We got to have something, because it's good to have ongoing through-year assessments where we know our kids are at. So we are spending money. We're going to spend money on whether it be MAP or NWE, Renaissance, or whatever we've been using, but with the product that we use, we want it to be statistically reliable. And so, Dr. Groppel, you want to chime in on that?
Yeah.
It would help to turn it on, or have batteries in it.
Yes, in my conversations with what we've seen with iReady, is there data better aligned than what they saw last year specifically in math? We believe so, as we look at how our students are performing, having our preliminary results back align with what we've seen throughout the year on our diagnostic. You know, the other component that goes into iReady that hasn't been talked about is the personalized learning plans that each kid gets, that teachers then have the ability to utilize as a supplement in their instructional plan to coincide with student performance. But I think to your question, Mr. Leveritts, we feel that what we've seen preliminary data from our K through eight students on their performance on STAR, much better aligns to what we've seen all year on our iReady diagnostic.
So your 3-8 data that's trickled in is similar to what you're seeing on this?
Yes, very much so.
There you go.
I was saying, not to be an endorsement, but Curriculum Associates takes our feedback very much so, and I think...
I bet they do.
Yeah, and I think one thing in working with other competitors, I would say, is they do take that feedback, and they also are interested in being the best and the most reliable. So I think what we're seeing this year is an enhancement to what we've seen in previous years.
I always know, you know, assessment's a big game, and there's lots of companies, and they're all vying to be the best, and, you know, just want to make sure we've got the best product. I'm not an iReady hater or anything, just, you know, but just want to make sure that we're getting good data back so that the teachers can make the best decisions and, you know. Love those supplemental lessons too, right? You know, none of our students know that if they just do poorly on the first assessment, they get easy assignments, right? They haven't figured that out, have they?
That's not how it works. That's not how it works.
I'm very pleased to see all the green on this instead of all the red. You know, we've improved significantly on that, but I'm still looking at social-emotional, and that's always been an area that we had problems with. And early writing, could you explain exact kind of what the teachers do in those testing scenarios, so I have a better understanding of what they're evaluating for those kids?
Yes, so they are provided a list of behaviors, and it's very much, for the social-emotional, it's like a survey. So it is consistently, sometimes with never, and the rubric doesn't change throughout beginning of year, middle of year, end of year. So it could be the student can follow directions without adult assistance. Well, you know, that could, as the year progresses, dynamics change. You, behaviors sometimes change as students become more comfortable. So that's why our team is working on a more specific, what teacher will see, what student will be doing type of rubric for our teachers, so that they can better understand that consistently in September may not be the same as consistently in April. So our team is developing that, similarly to what we've seen with early writing. Can a student write their name with or without assistance? Can a student hold the pencil in their dominant hand with or without assistance? Does a student draw, attempt to write left to right, right to left, like, very, do they scribble? Do they make the right directions? So it's a very generic document that teachers are filling out, in which our teams are doing their due diligence to really identify the behaviors, walk our teachers through that, more importantly, walk our aides through that as well, so that they can also provide clear data for our teachers.
Is there any guidance on, just kind of a follow-up, on making sure there's not any one-time or one-day bias?
And that's what our rubric is trying to develop.
Okay, because I could see, you know, teacher has a bad day, kid has a bad day, and those confluences of that, man, I'm marking that one down.
Well, and also, what time are they, I mean, what month are they doing this? April?
They do it in September, in January, and in April.
Yeah, I'm thinking April, they're like, we need to go home. It's time for school to end.
Senoritas.
You know what I mean?
And, you know, I think the other piece that we brought up is also the attendance. Like, is this a kid that I've gotten to see every day? Is this a kid that only comes when mom and dad drop them off? Like, or when they're not, when they have something to do, they've got doctor's appointments, so we're going to bring our kid today? And, you know, those types of things. If they're not there consistently, then, and our teachers don't have that direction that we're hoping to provide clarity on, we're not really getting the most accurate results.
Yeah, I bet with the younger kids, I threw this in my calculator, I bet we're getting 158 days of opportunity to instruction. That's an 85% attendance rate. And so the younger kids are usually sicker, their parents are a little bit more attached to them.
Yeah, it's a very subjective. I would say our current approach has been very subjective, and we're working to making it more objective.
Without being too objective, because I think, man, we'd start testing them out of the womb if we don't watch out. And so this provides a little bit of, I think, a little bit of professional discretion to teachers of the younger-year kids that are in it for other than standardized testing. You know, I mean, I'm just saying, so as long as we can get it professionalized and get it to where it makes sense statistically, because there is that qualitative research piece of this. Not all data comes from hard, standardized, high-stakes experiences. And so I think if we can figure out a way to make sure it's statistically reliable, it's good information for us.
And the good information, we struggle sometimes with some students being able to be in pre-K, Head Start at what their future home campus would be. And how great would it be to have a really true picture of a student that I may be inheriting new to my campus for my kindergarten teacher to look back and really trust the data to make some great decisions and make their kindergarten experience better?
Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Before you move on, hey, Mr. Jones, don't take up any more time. Give them a snapshot of where we are for high school and through-year assessment.
And through-year assessment?
Through-year assessment.
Okay, so right now with our CCMR data, is that specifically what you're asking about?
No, I'm talking about K8 stick their neck out all the time.
That's correct.
To get reported on up here all the time. And we all, only time we ever report anything from the high schools, because they smoke their pipes and they rub on their elbow patches, is at the end-of-year EOC. Because of TIA, we're being advantageous. We're actually giving more people more opportunity at Teacher Incentive Alotment Money.
That is correct.
But we also want to improve instruction. We also want to improve the learning outcomes for our students. So what does that look like as far as through-year assessment goes? We're adding some assessments outside of STAR and EOC.
Yes, to take advantage of the opportunity with TIA, we have now added upwards of, is it 100 more tests that we have, 130? So tests for, at the high school level, that will provide those teachers opportunities to have, to earn out of that pot of money, but more so, it gives us an idea of student performance in those non-STAR-tested arenas moving forward.
So basically, Board, you're going to get some more data that's going to be 9-12-centric, and it's going to be fun from the noise that y'all are going to get about that, because we haven't done that. And again, we needed to figure out a way to make sure that TIA was open for everyone that are not non-STAR-tested subjects. So chemistry teacher, right? Would that be a good example?
That'd be a great example.
Chemistry. We don't do an EOC for chemistry, but we... We don't do an EOC for chemistry, but we have chemistry. And so how do we know if kids are learning or not? How are we reporting that? How are we improving instruction and ultimately our outcomes so that they're having a better educational experience than Tyler ISD high schools? There's been a little bit of noise about it, but at the same time, I think that they're going to enjoy the opportunity at the Teacher Incentive Allotment funds that'll be available for them.
The springtime presents a lot of excitement around that when they look at their compadre getting their check. So it helps out.
So just wanted to give y'all a little preview that it is coming to the higher, excuse me, the high school grades as well.
Action item we have, consider approval of Head Start program information report for the '24, '25 school year. Motion.
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Has been moved, so we go to the discussion items. We have the committees that we need to have fulfilled. The internal article committee is Mr. Newsom and Mr. Martinez. Y'all good with that? Okay. Safety and security is Ms. Harrison and Yvonne Atkins. And the Tyler ISD Foundation Board is Mr. Lasay. Do I need to find something for Andy and Cody?
Congratulations, Mr. Leveritt, Mr. Bergfeld. I mean, condolences. Sorry, we couldn't find a place for y'all.
I can, I can.
Should there be a committee opportunity?
Chairman of the board for the other committee? Mr. Newsom?
I'm on it.
Okay, you still are.
Mr. Martinez over here in my ear whispering, I'm not doing it.
So, okay, Mr. Newsom.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins, I appreciate it.
Okay. I'll take my check after.
Take it twice.
Okay, we're now going into executive session, and we will return if we have any items. We'll return if we don't have.
Probably won't be very long for y'all if you don't need it. I don't have much, and I forgot I didn't have a legislative update today, but I prepared for it, so I'll just save that for the regular board meeting when we come back here in a couple of weeks, so.
Can we do it now if you want?
No, 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 we're good. We're good.
Okay.